Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, September fourteenth, twenty seventeen. If we could all please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming out tonight. Before we get down to this evening's business, we will approve some minutes. I will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of August twenty-fourth, twenty seventeen, and acceptance of warrants eleven V eighteen and ten P eighteen. So moved?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, tonight we have Chloe Martins with us. She's our student rep this year. We welcome her to our bi-weekly meetings. You're a junior.
Yep.
So thank you for coming out tonight. As I talked to you on the way up the stairs, I explained to you that feel free throughout, you know, if you have, you know, academics that need to be addressed, that you can slip out. We don't want, we don't want you to be here too late into the evening. Sometimes that does happen. Right Suzanne?
Mm-hmm.
So how are things going the first week and a half in school?
Good. A little stressful, but junior year, it's definitely gonna be challenging, can see it, but I think it's gonna be a good year. Starting to explore new stuff. But for student council, this year we're just trying to work on doing things earlier, getting more organized, and two events that we did do last year were the catwalk and the senior showcase. And those were two things that I really want to happen this year, especially the catwalk, because all those proceeds go to Dana Harbor. And it was just such a fun event to do freshman year, well, when I was a freshman, so it was two years ago. And, but we're also, homecoming is now October twentieth. Freshmen, their elections are gonna happen next week, and then pep rally and spirit week are gonna happen in November before Thanksgiving break. And then what else do we have? Oh, the blood drive.
Oh, when is that?
Blood drive, I think that usually happens in March. It's after, I think, February break, something like that.
Well, you do have a lot of things coming up, though.
Yeah, and we're trying to think of other things to do, maybe help with the hurricane that's happening, Hurricane Harvey and Irma that's happening down south. Or something with animals helping, like animal shelters, just some charity or volunteer, volunteer work we can do to help out.
That would be great. So what are you gonna do for the homecoming?
Homecoming, well, once the freshmen come, we're gonna start thinking of ideas to do, and it's gonna be October twentieth, twentieth, it's after the football game. And, I don't know, we're just gonna think of themes to do and how to plan it.
I've always heard that that's, a lot of the kids think that that's like better than even like the frolic, the homecoming. I think because they don't feel like that pressure, you know, because it's just, you just all go and have fun, whether it's, you know, nine to twelve.
It's a dance, dance. You don't have to look, I don't know, you don't have to get your hair done, you can do it yourself. It's just like a nice way into the year, I guess.
And hopefully they'll win that football game that night.
Yeah.
Right.
That would definitely make it better. And I think girls soccer has a game, but it's earlier, so I think it's good. I think it's their senior game, so hopefully they win too.
Oh, yeah, that would be, yeah. I was just at the varsity soccer, girl soccer, they lost two to nothing, but the JV won. I'm thinking, what else is going on? Field hockey, how are they doing? Are you on the field hockey team?
Yeah, I'm on the field hockey team. Field hockey, we got a new coach this year. She's definitely making us work really hard and we're definitely improving. I can see improvement every game. First two games, we lost, but I think we're just getting used to our new coach and so I think this is gonna be a good season.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
All right, well, the attitude is great, so, good. Well, thanks for coming out.
You're welcome.
Okay, is there anyone here from the public that would like to talk to us about anything on the agenda tonight? Okay, the first item that we're gonna talk about is the sixth grade Camp Kiev trip that's planned. So we have Joe Patella here, and Margaret, could you come on up too? Christine, do you wanna come up, or do you wanna do that totally separate? Like if you wanna come and sit up and...
Uh, I don't know.
Why don't you come on up, just in case we have some questions that might fall on the eighth grade trip.
Thank you guys for coming tonight.
You're welcome, you're welcome.
So it's that time of year again when we talk about Camp Kiev, which is a great program. So, yep, so I know that this year that we have some challenges that you're addressing, so if we could just maybe talk about that, that would be great. In terms of the duration of the trip and things like that.
So, as you know, the sixth grade Camp Kiev trip has always been five days. And the trip really needs to be booked a year in advance. And so last year, when the week was reserved, and, you know, Mr. Patella can jump in, but Penbrook or middle school always has kind of reserved that mid-week in November, or beginning week in November. So this year, a couple of weeks ago, when we were looking at the calendar and realizing that the Veterans Day is actually celebrated this year on the Friday and not a Monday, and since we had already, you know, booked that week, we are now facing a dilemma of what to do. Because children and teachers will be in school Monday through Thursday, but if the trip is approved for five days, then teachers and the kids up at Camp Kiev would actually be in school for five days on a day when there's no school. So I know Superintendent had outlined some options, and so I think that's what we need to decide what to do.
Okay. Do I have the actual form? Do you guys have that? I have this for the eighth grade.
Yeah, it was emailed, and I didn't read it.
Okay. Okay, so in terms of keeping it, I understand the five days is pretty important in this particular program. So you're leaning towards going Monday through Friday?
We're leaning towards doing whatever the school committee approves.
Okay.
If you're, if you're asking me my opinion, the, the, the fifth day is essential, you know, it, it, it is vital. I can only speak because I've only gone on the fif- five-day trip. We never did four days before. But that last day, the culminating activities, the pulling it all together is essential for the entire trip. Can it be done on Thursday as opposed to Friday? Yes, it could be, but obviously the kids would be missing out on some classes and some culminating activities for that last day.
So I would assume that you talked to Camp Kiev, and they must have given their opinion as well?
Oh, yeah, yeah, no, they, they...
So they lean towards the five days?
They absolutely lean towards the five days. They are going to be open that Friday for Veterans Day, and they're waiting on, on our decision on what we're gonna do, whether it be four or five days.
Do you have concerns if you do keep it the five days that there could be some children that will not go because maybe a planned vacation?
That's always a possibility. We've had sporting events that have happened on Fridays of when we're returning, and parents had come up on Wednesday, or there is it to pick up their child. Would there be a mass exodus, or a lot of students that we're talking about? Probably not.
And you have a planned meeting on Monday?
Correct.
And what time is that?
Six thirty.
And again, the, the reason it becomes an issue, of course, is that if we do stay the five days, there will be an impact. So there will either be a financial impact because there will be some monetary stipends that will be owed to teachers for working that extra day, or to decide alternately what else to do. So that's why it really becomes either a calendar issue or a budget issue.
So if they go the five days, then it would either be a day off at the end of the school year for both children and teacher, teachers that attend.
Right, or someplace else in the year, but, you know, we'd be looking at a professional development day for the teachers. But I don't know if that's really what we wanna do. I mean, those days are set aside because it's important work that, that is being done, and then the students wouldn't be there. So, you know, in that hand, that might work out. But I think in the past, it's always been to look at maybe that last day of school and have the teachers and the children that attend Camp Kiev not come on the last day.
Do we have, so would the teachers get to choose, basically, if they wanted to get paid or take the day?
I, I, I don't know. We hadn't actually thought about that option.
It would be cleaner if it was all just one or the other.
I would think it's, right.
You're here, but you're not, like...
Sure, I'm planning on doing both, getting paid and taking the day off, so we're gonna see how well that goes over.
And are there weeks then just not an option? I know it was, it was looked at.
Mr. Patella did call, and...
Yeah, we, we, the, as Margaret mentioned, that the weeks are planned a year in advance. And I reached out to Kiev and see if the week, their, the season ends the week before Thanksgiving. And I reached out to Kiev to see if they would be available the week after. And Reed, our contact person, was very generous enough and said, "We will remain open if I can get the staffing to do it for you guys, because we do have the longest-running relationship with Kiev from a Massachusetts school." And he pulled his staff and unfortunately was unable to get a staff for that particular week after Thanksgiving.
So I guess the question is, so are we the ones deciding what the teachers get for compensation, or...
I think are we deciding just the options, one, two, and three here?
Decision is four or five days.
Right.
Right. Right, so it's, option one is pay the teachers who attend for an additional day. Option two is don't require the teachers and students that attend Kiev to attend the last day of school. And option three is to shorten the trip to four days and have no school on Veterans Day.
Okay, so it sounds like that option would not be ideal. So let's talk about first and second.
Does, does having the last day, if we do the, you don't have, teachers and students don't have to attend the last day, you know, the end of the year is always tricky, does that just, I get that it's one day and it's not gonna radically change anything, but does it just kind of keep chewing away at the end of the productive part of the end of the year?
It's usually a half day.
It's a half day.
Right.
And the teachers that, that don't attend Camp Kiev, they would be in school, and any students that don't attend Camp Kiev, the expectation, they would be in school. And, you know, there is something to that, that the last day, even though it is a half day, it's a time, it's a joyous day, it's, you know, festive, and it's the last day, and we say goodbye to everybody and head off in the summer. So in that sense, we do lose that school community.
Right.
So, but I also understand that it's a financial, there's a financial aspect if you have to pay the teachers.
Sixth grade is kind of unique. I mean, they've, you know, they're moving on to middle school, the middle high school, so...
They are.
They have a lot of ceremonies and celebrating, they're, they're moving on.
Our, our moving on, and I'm sorry to interrupt, moving on ceremony, I think, is Thursday, the fifteenth. I'm fairly certain it's Thursday, the fifteenth, so...
What's the last day?
This is the fourteenth.
Well, the current last...
I don't know.
Day, yeah.
Yeah, the last day of school. On these orange notes, it says June fourteenth.
So it's probably the fourteenth is the moving on ceremony, always hoping there would probably be a day or two. But children do come after that, and so I know in the past couple of years, sixth graders say, "Yeah, we moved on, do we have to come back?" Yes, you still have to come back till the last day.
Teachers do.
And often it does go into the next week. There usually are two or three snow days, so usually we are into that, into that next week.
So it's logical in a lot of people's mind that once you have that ceremony...
We're, we're done, but we're actually not done.
Just kidding.
And what's the total cost of the trip for the five days? I have two sixty-five for the four days.
Two ninety for the five.
Well, there's just one little question too. I mean, what if the last day of school really was June fourteenth, and you have this planned for June fourteenth? I mean, it's so unlikely.
Right.
Very, we, we have predictions of a, you know, a very snowy, eventful winter. Who knows where that's gonna go, but...
Right.
What if that actually was the last day? Would you be able to change the plans to make it on June thirteenth?
It really, it really wouldn't need to be. We have it in the morning. It would just be a very busy morning. The moving on ceremony is usually at ten. Or are you saying if the, if the students didn't come?
You have this ceremony on June fourteenth, and we have no snow days.
Right, and that's the last day.
Fourteenth is the last day, and we've said you don't need to be there.
Oh, well, that would be a problem, and I would just move, we would just move, I would just move the, moving on.
You could. That's doable, it's not monumental. I'm sure it's significant with a lot of logistical, but still, it could be done.
Well, about three weeks ago, I emailed Principal Lucia to find out if there were any conflicts with that day. And he said, "In essence, I haven't even thought about June, so go ahead and take the day." So we would just have to look to make sure there were no other conflicts, if we had to move that day.
To June thirteenth.
Or any other day, right.
Right.
Based on the luck and all the kinds of things.
So I could probably still get any date I wanted.
In the past, we have had the move-on day, the exact same day as the eighth grade celebration. So that has proved to be a tricky move for the parents who have children in sixth grade and eighth grade going to both. So we're cognizant of that and try to work around it.
Right, but again, if we nab our day first, then they'll have to schedule around us, so...
As soon as we have one snow day, you're gonna know that June fourteenth is okay.
Exactly, right.
Eight months or nine months away, it's, there's one to have between now.
Exactly, yes, yeah, we have time.
Odds of no snow days, I don't think we've ever had.
I, I don't remember never having a snow day, yeah.
So at this point, without, you know, making the decision four days, five days, you have about fifty percent of the kids planning on going, on attending?
Fifty percent?
The kids, the kids, the children?
We have much more than that. We only have historically maybe five percent of the students, if that, stay behind.
That stay behind.
Yeah.
So do we know numbers of kids?
I don't have any idea.
No, we're roughly estimating, well, we have a class of one hundred two right now, and we're estimating about ninety.
It's such a wonderful experience. I mean, the kids hear about it from their older siblings and their older friends, and they get excited about it, and they, they wanna go. I mean, it's really important. It's more than just a fun week. I mean, there's curriculums that teach them all about decision-making and team-building and self-esteem and leader, I mean, all these, you know, really important, important things that are really the essence of social, emotional development in the middle school. I mean, students in middle school level have a kind of a difficult time learning, remembering, you know, taking in the academics if they're not rooted strongly and supported socially, emotionally. You know, if they don't really, if they're always worried about what everybody else is thinking, it's really hard to listen to the teacher and, and focus on what they need to focus. So I, I've just, I'm a big supporter of Kiev, so...
As am I.
Um, yes. So I just feel that it's very important to students, and I think there's, a lot of students say they know that. There's very, very few that, you know, don't lie.
I misread the statistic. So it's not fifty percent of the students, but fifty percent of the teachers are attending. And so does that give enough support to, enough chaperones, enough for the kids?
We will have enough chaperones.
And I am hoping that we have four, so fifty percent would be three of the sixth grade team, but I am hoping that we can get a fourth from the team, perhaps a pair to go.
Is there a plan? Because Joe, like, highlighted very specifically lots of information about what the teachers do at Kiev. Is there a plan as to how that will be brought back to the teachers who aren't there?
Good question.
Well, every year, we attend on Wednesday afternoons up at Kiev while the kids are at one of their free-time activities, a hour, hour-and-a-half-long PD afternoon where we meet with a couple of the counselors, and they lay out exactly ways of you can take these activities that we all learn at Kiev and incorporate them into our curriculum. Matter of fact, they go out of their way to show, "This is how you can use this activity in ELA. This is how you can use this in math. It can be done." So we have all of these people going through the Kiev experience and bringing that back. On top of that, Kiev provides a booklet of the activities and all the materials that would be necessary to pull this off, and the instructions to do it as well. The teachers take that booklet or take the information that they learn and hopefully are incorporating it into their classroom. You know, you're not going to see a Kiev lesson every day, but they are incorporating them. And, you know, when you have somebody who's gone, as long as I have, it becomes second nature. But we have a lot of young staff members who are just rifling through for the first, second, third time. And it takes time to get that into their curriculum, and they are working it in as we speak.
So if they're not there, like, will there be team time so that the folks who are experiencing it during the week, having that Wednesday meeting, just to, especially if we're talking about teachers who haven't been that often, maybe even once or twice? I don't know, to me, it's just really important that if the teacher is not there, that there is a plan as to how to bring it back and make sure that they're implementing and understanding.
There is a plan. We do meet weekly, and after our trip to Kiev, we do meet a couple of times a week in regards to trying to incorporating that and not losing the energy and enthusiasm that the kids gain from Kiev. As of right now, there's only one sixth-grade teacher that has not been. All the others have been, even though they may not be going this particular year. So our staff is becoming more well-versed in what we have to do and how to bring it back and how to incorporate it in the classroom.
You know, I, I had just discovered this. I haven't looked at this before. There are a lot of, there's thirty-one YouTube videos on Kiev WAVE's education. There's a ton of them, just for, for people who haven't been there.
Sure.
Which I think would be, you know, really helpful, but... For the parents and teachers, you're saying? Yes, yeah. So the, it, it states here that Kiev looks for a twenty-to-one student, student-teacher ratio, so then with the four...
Probably not quite makes sense.
So that's still appropriate, though?
It is.
That's what they, they look for, but...
We can sell it to them.
Well, I, I have the same, the same concern that Cheryl has, is just the kids that are in a particular teacher's classroom that is not attending. And, you know, how would that teacher then keep that Kiev mindset going? Because it is valuable, and I just wanna ask Chloe, I'm sure you remember your sixth grade Kiev experience?
Yeah, that was such a fun trip. I, I remember, like, so many activities that we had, and I think it was that, we get to learn leadership skills and like how to communicate. There was, I remember one activity where we had to be blindfolded, and someone had to direct you of, like, finding these objects in the grass. And also, when we went rock climbing, they didn't teach, like, hold us. It was like four students that hold up, and we held us, and then we just had to have trust in our students and our teachers. And that was a trip that I think definitely should happen, both in sixth and eighth grade, because that was really fun.
Right, do you remember both of them?
I know, I know some kids that are, you know, out of high school for quite some time, and they still remember their, their Kiev trip. So it's certainly a, a trip that I've always been in support of. It, it's just making sure that it's a trip that, when they go, that it's still, you know, is on the mindset of the staff throughout the school, you know, throughout the whole school year, and then when they go to the eighth grade, I know it's, you know, they're very different animals, sixth graders and eighth graders, but, well, I was just... It's a philosophy that gets carried consistently through sixth, seventh, and eighth grade.
But I will say, I haven't been to Camp Kiev, but I don't think it's a unique philosophy. I think it's a philosophy of, again, team-building, support, you know, respect for one another. And those are the themes that are carried through in many ways at Penbrook. The adjustment counselor, and with our SRO, Assistant Principal, and Michael Walsh, work with small groups of both fifth and sixth graders on all kinds of social, emotional issues, and then teachers are a part of that. And then with PBIS this year, which again is a major initiative that we'll be talking about in detail on October twelfth, I think. But it is a way, again, just a daily reminder of how to be respectful and, and get along and supporting one, one another. So I think it's a, a great experience for the children, but I also don't think that if they, that's not the only way they have. So if a teacher doesn't go, then all of a sudden, they're not going to be able to help students with those, with those skills, because there are many other ways that they can help develop those skills.
So the three teachers that are staying back, if there's only, you know, twelve kids that don't go, that's what we're anticipating, what will those teachers be doing?
Well, I will say, there is, it is a rare day in the morning when I read my who's out, that there isn't someone out, and generally...
So they can just substitute for another classmate?
That they can be in classrooms, they can be helping out, so I don't think there would be any dearth of responsibilities.
So, and like I had said before, I think the, the third option is not one that we should even think about, which is short, shortening the trip, because I do see the, the value, not to mention that in the morning, they have, like, the, the, the parents go up.
Right.
And that is a very special time, I think.
It's on Friday?
Yeah, so they can go up and attend their own workshop, and then, you know, some choose to go up, you know, to spend the lunchtime together. So if we did shorten the trip to four days, that would probably remove that aspect altogether, because it would be pretty late. It's a good three-hour drive, right?
Right.
So did, so the parents go up the last day? I, I just remember going up in the middle of the week.
Yeah.
So what happened, Cheryl, the reason why it changed from Wednesday to Friday was because we were finding out the hard way that some kids were going home Wednesday because of homesickness. And we figured out that if we change it to Friday, that, you know, that changes the whole dynamic of the week. And also, there's a financial impact, Barbie, if we choose to go the four-day, because right now, our classes are so small this particular year, we're looking at the possibility of only taking, instead of three buses up, two buses back, we're looking at the possibility of taking two buses up, one bus back, because a lot of parents do show up for that Friday morning. It's very valuable, and if we changed it to Thursday night, I just don't think we're gonna get the buy-in from the parents, and, "No, I'm not gonna come up. It's rush hour traffic. I'm not gonna bother." So if we could, if we change it to go to the, if we stick with the five days, I think we can get away with going up with two buses and coming back with one, which will be a, which will lessen the amount.
Can I, a question about just, just the, the, the numbers, I guess, don't make sense to me in, in terms of the budget. And this is, this is not as related to the first half of conversation. And this is, this is not as related to the first half of conversation. The, in your notes, you said it's forty-one a day. Ignore me, I just answered the question.
Okay.
Trump's up to forty-eight today, if it's Thursday.
Yes.
Which is more expensive.
So it's two, okay, two, yeah, okay. Answered my question, thank you for that.
No problem. Glad I could help.
Okay, so we talked to Suzanne about the financial impact that it has and it's pretty minimal. In terms of um paying them for the additional day. I did ask for just that, um, she provided me with the, with the teachers rate for the three without the um.
The teachers rates, yeah. The five teachers, right.
Well, she gave me the three.
Oh, you got three?
Um, three teachers, but she didn't give me the um, which I'm sure isn't a huge amount, but do you have that?
Me, I do not have that, no, I didn't. All I got was the five teachers, I think you take the three pairs of this.
I think it was like nineteen hundred.
Um, no.
Those are the five, six grade teachers, yeah, that's what Tricia gave me.
Teachers, right.
So it's nineteen hundred for five teachers.
Five teachers, right. So it's like three teachers and a pair, so it would be less.
And the pairs, so it would be less. It might be closer to like fifteen or sixteen.
Yeah.
Well, and there would be really three teachers and one para.
Right.
Right.
So it would be five anyway. Right, exactly, yes. I think Tricia just looked at all the sixth grade teachers.
So the financial impact is, is minimal?
Yeah, it's pretty.
So I think for me, what, what is the least disruptive, in that the, the financial impact is minimal? What's the least, of the five day options, what's the least disruptive to your world?
I would think option one.
Pay, paying, yes.
Okay.
Again, I mean, I'm not, can vote a way, but.
Right, because then option two, we'd have to, you know, with the snow days, figure all that stuff out.
Yeah.
Right, exactly. And then it is just the element of, you know, who gets to leave and, and who doesn't and then, you know, we're all together. And so if you can, you know, if we can come up with that money, that would be the least disruptive, I think.
And with the kid, so would the kids still have the option of not going the last day because they would technically be going?
Right, an, an extra day, I would hope they would still come, but I suppose technically they, they wouldn't have to.
But I would assume it would be an un, it would be an excused absence if they chose.
Well, I mean, it is a hundred and eighty days for students, so it would be an extra day.
Right, and they're, they're fulfilling that obligation.
Exactly.
So it's not something like on the day of the meeting on Monday, do you plan on explaining that? Like will that come in, into the discussion?
I, I, I think if we choose to go the five days, I think it would have to become part of the discussion just to be transparent and clear to the parents that. You know, if we decide on the five days, basically if the students came that last day, it would be a hundred and eighty-one days.
So they would not be required to go that last day?
They would not be required to.
Right. Okay. Do you guys have any other discussion on it before I make a motion? Hey, I'll make a motion to approve the sixth grade trip to Camp Kiev from November sixth to November tenth, twenty seventeen. With the um, uh, we will be going with option one. Which would be to pay the teachers the um additional um day. Children under Joe Patello's direction on nine eighteen will explain to the parents. Their obligation is to not send their child to the last day of school. I do think that does need to be transparent.
Sure.
So moved, oh, sorry.
Sorry.
Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I think they'll have a great time.
Great, thank you.
Right, thank you.
Christine, now?
My turn.
No. Okay, so your uh trip is being uh for the eighth graders, May twenty-ninth to May thirty-first, which is a perfect um time of the year.
Yep. Perfect, yes, we got moved up last year, uh but I'm happy to see that it's on for our same week this year.
Yeah, I, I think that's definitely a better week, what do you think? Was your week in eighth grade nice?
I think it was like early May, I think it was a little rainy, it wasn't that nice, but um it was so fun.
I remember it being very, very sunny.
Oh.
But.
Well, I.
I always have a great time when I go, so.
That she's thinking.
I don't remember, I think it was like a little over like cast, but not too bad. Um, it was still a nice trip.
And you enjoyed the eighth grade trip?
Oh, yeah, yeah, even if it was a little rainy, it was still really fun.
Yeah, that's good, I'm glad. So with the, with this trip, um, there is uh three staff members and then it says one to two additional chaperones.
Right, so we have uh someone from special education who'll be joining us. Uh, that's, that's a really important support person there. Uh, and we'll get one more additional staff person to come along that's closely associated with the team, so someone who knows the students.
Okay, so then, so is, how many eighth grade teachers are on that team?
Uh, there's four core uh teachers and then there's, then there's our uh Courtney Arigo, our, our foreign, you know, Spanish teacher. She has a significant number of the students as well.
Okay, so we, but so for this trip too, we're, we're losing out on this, the staff members going?
Two, yeah, two, two of them cannot attend.
Do you want to add anything on that, no?
Are you sure about two, Christine? One is going to be on leave, do we know if she's going or not?
Uh, sh- she indicated she would not, so I, I don't really, I don't have any further information. She was only in for the first week or so of school, so.
Yeah.
We hadn't had a, we had barely even had a secure date at that point.
Yeah.
So this was very, we were just quickly to secure the date and.
Yeah. I think it's just, um, I love the trip and again, fully support it. Um, this is the first year that I'm, I'm recognizing that not all the staff are attending. Uh, I always was aware of one that would stay back with the children that chose, you know, not to attend. And I, you know, a hundred percent agree that we have to have a staff member back, but it's just, I wasn't aware that it wasn't um, you know, the rest of them.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so I think like as Cheryl had said, we're just concerned that uh, you know, the whole philosophy. And I, I understand that the philosophy isn't like, you, you know, a hundred percent unique, it's, but still, it's.
I understand.
Uh, you know, as teachers, I know throughout the year, teachers will bring up, oh, remember when we did this in Kiev, remember this, which I love. Like there's a teacher that wasn't there that year.
Mm-hmm.
You know, how are they bringing that back into the classroom?
Yeah, so I was thinking about it as you were having the sixth grade discussion and for the eighth grade, um, it really ties into our advisory program. And so that's one of the things that, that all the core teachers are responsible for being a part of. Um, Joe mentioned the books uh that come back. Um, one of the things that in, the couple of years prior and even last year, we, I specifically sat in on some of those lessons to target specific things that they do and what does that look like in our classroom during our advisory? So the teachers can make a better connection with their students. Uh, we bring that back, we explain what happens within the classroom, we show pictures, brief videos to the other teachers. So they really sort of get that feel of they've been there, kind of a thing. Um, and then it's up to within the individual advisory groups, which some students may, in the advisory group, some students may attend Kiev, some students may not. You know, they get the benefit of having some of that curriculum, albeit not, while they're not in person at the camp. Uh, so I do feel that there is lots of value in that and that what we do bring back truly is core to the advisory program.
Well, I do think it would be easier for you to, at the middle, at the middle school to do that, to bring that in because.
For the advisory.
No, well, just because of the kids rotating their, you know, classes.
Right.
So it's not like a, you know, where at, at Penbrook, you're more apt to have, well, sixth grade, they rotate, but not like the middle school. Not as.
If, um, at Penbrook, they do rotate as a class, so the same group of students will rotate to each, each teacher.
Whereas, whereas, whereas the, it isn't the same, same group of students in every different classroom. It's a complete randomization, it's not complete, but some randomization of students to different classes. So you may not be in the same classes with the same. The, yeah, the same twenty-six students or whatever it is.
Well, that makes me feel better too than at Penbrook, that, that at least those three uh teachers, when they have, you know, the ones that attend would be able to share.
And it really is specific curriculums, the, the Camp Kiev have kind of.
Yeah.
Brought together the, the life skills training, the Botvin life skills curriculum, along with the all way is bullying prevention curriculum.
Yep.
Along with the, the Johnson Institute.
Yep.
Curriculum and they get into the search institute, uh, the forty developmental assets. So they, they bring these different approaches and they make a real specific curriculum that it's.
Yeah, it's absolutely specific.
Important for teachers to, to be aware, to know about.
Mm-hmm.
And do you have a similar percentage of kids that stay back or do they all go?
Uh, we, we have probably, um, we have probably about the same five percent that will not, that will not attend for one reason or another.
So when we start, do you fundraise for this?
We're going to, we're going to fundraise this year, again, this is just, we just literally came out the gate and said, do you want to go? Yeah, I'll go, so, uh, so, yeah, so we did a little bit of brainstorming in my advisory class and I said, so what are we going to do about this? How can we help others, how can we bring this cost down for everybody? They had some great ideas, um, I'm going to talk, I discussed some of them with our team teachers at our last meeting. We're going to see what the student council has to offer because the student council might have some similar ideas or better ideas, even better. Middle school student council and I, we think that that would be helpful to us too. So we are going to look actively at ways to try to raise funds to reduce the cost.
And then when are you going to um actually inform the parents of the dates?
Uh, as soon as we can confirm cost per person, we just got a bus cost the other day, so it's marginally up, I mean, a dollar or less.
Cause I found that the gas prices.
Uh, fingers crossed that they hold that, hold the gas price. Uh, so it's, it's just less, I think it's a dollar or less more than it was last year, which is good. So we just got to wait for the, the cost per person from the camp, uh, and then we'll get those things out to parents.
And you don't have the advantage of getting, uh, decreasing the number of buses coming back because all the kids.
Everybody goes and everybody comes home, yeah. And, and the bus time is also, you know, it's, it's, you know, singing the songs and having a good time and looking forward to a great, you know, a great few days together. It's pretty intensive, it's a whole lot of fun and you leave and you know your students a whole lot better.
Right, and they know you a whole lot better too.
And that's the best part, yeah, there's something so priceless about being able to experience those things together that you, you just, you know, nothing can replace that.
Right, you were able to see them, right, do you agree that you were able to see the teachers, like wow, they might be actually pretty funny people or things like that?
I remember going on like a hike with you or something.
Yeah, wait for a walk around the point, yeah.
Yeah, see, isn't that nice that that's what kids remember? That's, that's great, I love that. Um, and the steam, will you be, like last year, we talked to Kiev about incorporating more steam um things in the program, is that?
I brought my own stuff last time and so to speak.
Does it surprise?
Well, they, uh, they, the, the kids swung on the, uh, they swung on the high swing. Uh, and we directly related to that to, you know, uh, potential energy and kinetic energy and how many swings does it take before they have to get stopped? And uh, you know, they were able to see a direct representation of it, so that was really great. Uh, we talked about some life science stuff, you know, some, you know, why is, why is there green foam on the side, what does that mean? You know, what does it mean when all these trees are dead on one side and not dead on the other? Why are they all, why are all the branches growing on one side? So there's a whole lot of life science and we talked about a little bit of geology here and there about the rocks that are all along the side. What made this lake, you know, simple stuff that, you know, the individual groups as we're all rotating through, uh, you know, giving them a little bit of science lesson too.
Now, do you feel as a teacher, when you go there, that they, the Kiev counselors are the ones that want to have like the um, you know, all the attention on them or is it like a fifty-fifty partnership?
No, no, they're very much, you know, it's the students doing the students thing and they are literally just the facilitator. So they, they, they start the, they start with a prompt and then they, they ask, they are very fair about it. So if somebody's being really quiet, you know, we offer the opportunity to, for them to voice whatever their feelings are or however they feel. And they encourage participation and, you know, and give kudos and rewards and say, hey, great job, I know it was tough. Um, and, and it's just a really supportive environment, I, I can't say enough about it. It's just one of a kind, kind of a thing, I kind of wish I had that when I was a kid, it would have made a, made a difference in my middle school education. So the fact that Georgetown has it is great.
And will uh Mrs. Monjo be going?
Uh, I believe she, she usually comes up for one day.
Right.
Um, and she comes in, she stops in, she sees everybody and she participates, uh, and then she goes, I'd love her, she could stay the whole time, but.
Yeah, that's a long trip for one day.
It is a long trip for one day.
But even one day, I think would be, would be great, I know in years past, she's done that.
Yeah, yeah.
It does say one or two additional chaperones.
I think I also read that it said parents would not be the most.
That was the other one.
Oh, you think an eighth grade might be different?
Well, yeah, yeah.
Um, does anybody have any other questions about it? Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the um eighth grade trip to Camp Kiev for the dates May twenty-ninth to May thirty-first, twenty eighteen. I hate even saying the year.
Mm-hmm.
Um, as presented by Christine Bogarty. So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
That's great.
Thank you.
Have a good time.
Will, thank you very much.
And are you going to be coming to talk to us about Camp Invention?
Uh, I can.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I do have.
I could talk a little bit about it today, but I don't know.
No, I want to have you come with the pictures again like you did.
Yeah, 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 uh, we can coordinate with Heidi and get a slideshow together, yeah, I'd love to do that.
We'll give you ample opportunity to make that slideshow.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I've forgotten some of the spots, I did, that was so much fun last year watching the kids. Okay, we have um just the opening uh school reports, which is great. Margaret and Peter, do you want to come up together?
Sure.
Hello?
Hi. Again. Hey, we're excited to hear how things went or how things are going.
Things have gone very smoothly, I will say, the third year in. Most routines have been um tried and true, so parents that are familiar with Penbrook just kind of, you know, jumped right back into um the routine. We always have the new group of kindergarten parents, about a hundred parents who are new. And so some of that is a learning curve of just, again, getting everyone back in the routine. For instance, we have three major parking lots at Penbrook, there's the lower and then what I refer to as the kindergarten lot and then the upper lot. And so I really try hard to make sure that parents are not and teachers are not parking in that kindergarten lot. Because that is where parents come in the morning, you know, park, drop off and then in the afternoon, park and then pick up their child. And so obviously it's very difficult if other cars are in that lot. So that is a routine that maybe takes some adjusting of, please don't park in that kindergarten lot, you know, park in the lower lot or, or go through the drive. But um, but it also at, at Pearly, I'll just give you a couple of numbers. Um, Pearly also had a smooth start and they're starting the year with a hundred and twenty-seven children. Um, thirty-one half day, ninety-six full day.
Twenty-seven, yeah.
Twenty-seven. And.
How many full and how many half?
Thirty-one half day children and ninety-six full day.
Wow, so we know where the need is there.
Yes.
Yeah, full day.
And how many kids per class, because I know the.
Well, they're, they're full, they, they are, they're.
It's an increase of eighteen students from last year.
Most classes, again, I don't have the exact number of every class, but they probably have seventeen students. And we always leave room for um children who might come out of EI and require an IEP. And that is our challenge, that we really don't have many spots, so, you know, and we don't really know too much in advance who those children are that will turn three throughout the year. Um, so obviously we'll, we'll make room, that, that's what we'll do, but we're, we're pretty full.
Right, well, it's because the number is misleading because not every child go, goes every day.
Exactly, that's why it's that.
Because twenty-five divided by five is twenty-five kids per class, which I know.
Oh, no, no.
I know that's not happening.
Well, and that's why every year it's that difficult, the difficulty explaining how many spots we have open. Because there are just so many variables of trying to figure those Monday through Friday, the Tuesday, Thursday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So, I mean, obviously it can be done, but it's just, it's very difficult to figure that out.
So are you officially closed, like if somebody called?
We have, um, as of the last time I got these numbers, there was one Monday, Wednesday, Friday half day and one Monday through Friday.
Wow, that's good.
Which could be a combination of either a Monday, Wednesday, Friday or a Tuesday, Thursday, so that could either be one or two children. So it is, we're full, we're pretty full, but waiting list in January?
That's great.
So.
And the pickup procedure is doing well over, over there with the.
At Pearly?
Yeah.
Again, I'm not there, but I'm, I haven't heard otherwise, so I'm assuming no news is good news in the afternoon.
What, like with the senior centers?
Right, exactly.
Senior center now, all those people park in the front.
So are the.
It's better.
For drop off, is everybody parking on the other part of the lot?
And then everyone. And then everyone parks i- in the big Pearlie parking lot. You know, I know we all, we all park over there, yeah.
Well, that's good. Used to have parking. I remember when my kids went there, they had to park like on the street and walk, remember?
Yes. Right.
There were more, there were more kids there too, right?
Yes, yes.
Free K, K one, right. Yeah, I remember those days. And then, um, Penbrook does start the year with six hundred and ninety four students. And, um, our maker spaces are open and getting into that routine, so that's wonderful. When you were asking about the, the steam at Camp Kiev, we have our own steam daily in the maker space, so we're very excited about that.
Yeah, Suzanne and I had an opportunity to go in there, um, one day and, and witness the kids, uh, for, those kids had seen it for the first time that day and they were so excited.
Right.
They just couldn't get enough of everything that was there. Like we could, we're like, where is it? We were walking upstairs and we could hear. You just had to follow the kids, the noise, you know.
The buzz, right.
But they were just having so much fun.
Right.
Well, and the kindergartners visited during their library time.
My, my, my.
Um, and they were involved in activities.
Yeah, and there's definitely the different levels, because that was my concern is, you know, when you have kids from K to six in the school.
Right.
You know, how will, how will each grade be able to, you know, find fun or find activities to do in?
No power tools in kindergarten.
There was sewing machines left on.
Well, like I've been up there a few times just because I've been donating things, so I've seen different tables set up, you know, for different abilities or different grade levels, different.
Which is great.
Yeah.
And the other, the other nice tie in again with our PBIS, I know I keep referring to that and people are probably thinking, you know, what is she talking about? But, um, and our, our CARES acronym. CARES is for, the C is for cooperation. So much of the activities, they're bringing in those cooperations, so when chil- children are working together, they're emphasizing this is cooperation. How are you working with your partner? How are you working in your groups cooperating? So really making that tie in across the board. And then, um, I guess the, the couple of challenges we've had are the buses. And really just having, you know, everyone be patient until drivers know the routes and until everyone figures out maybe some routes need to be adjusted. So one of the buses is still a little bit, um, getting to school right, right at the start of school. But this morning, um, Assistant Principal Dorn and I met with the drivers to talk about our PBS, um, you know, model and how to bring in the bus drivers into that. And it was pointed out that there are so many factors still that may be contributing to why one of the buses is late. That either still the construction on Elm Street, for instance, this morning, I guess there was one way for part of it. Um, you know, waiting for cars coming out of Penbrook, you know, delays the bus getting in. So if they're delayed five minutes, then that does account for five minutes that students could've been in school. So, um, at our safety meeting, we can address that and just figure out if we do need to adjust a route or it does need more time.
So is the Elm Street construction, um, difficult for parents as well? How was that going?
I haven't heard for parents and they're, they're very good with the town and the police are very good about directing that and, and making sure that everybody can get through. But just if, because sometimes it might be one way. So if cars are going through and the bus has to wait or, or vice versa.
It is every, I feel like every day is a little bit different. There are some days when it's, we're all on the left side, some days we're going around a big dump truck. It's.
Right.
Every day is.
But is it a lot, like is it a long wait?
No, no, it, it's all moving. I don't think, I don't think I've been stuck in Elm Street at all.
Oh, good. Right.
Well, that's, that's a plus.
But it's a little bit of you turn the corner and I wonder what's gonna happen today.
Right.
Right, where am I gonna go?
Right.
Well, I just try to get there early. I leave my house at eight o'clock for.
Right.
Where do you live?
Right, I know, I know. I know.
So, so the kids haven't been late because of the buses?
Well, we don't, we don't mark them late. We, but they, they are, they're coming in.
But they are entering.
Yes, they're, they're coming in when the other children are either in, um, I mean, there's no doubt about it. It's not optimal. Because as we're always asking parents not to be late, because that arrival time is so important for children to line up with their class, to transition in, have that time to say goodbye and separate from parents. And then, and then it's hard when a bus is late and kids are scurrying in and, you know, afraid they're going to be late. And it just doesn't give them that chance to settle in and be with their peers. So, again, we, they're not marked tardy, but we know it's also not, it's not optimal, so.
I know the superintendent had, had said, like, within, like, four weeks, we'll get another update in. Usually it settles in by then.
Right.
Right? I mean, you, I'm sure you see a difference of, an improvement since.
Right.
That first, you know, couple of days to today.
Absolutely, right. But it's, it's really just this one bus, so I don't know if it's the number of children on the bus. So we just have to look at that one, that one bus run.
Well, just, since I'm there early, there are usually three buses there at about five after eight, ten after eight.
Right, yeah.
And then the fourth one comes up and then as the kids are walking in is when the fifth one's been pulling it up. So there, I mean, it, it's a little bit of a hustle for them to join up, but they're not, like, morning meeting hasn't started.
Oh, exactly, right. But it is, but again, the, the littles are coming in on that side and then they're trying to, you know, cut through to get to the other side. And so, exactly, they're not, they are not going to be late for instruction or the morning meeting, but it's just not the best way to start the day.
How about, um, in the afternoon for, or, um, kids getting home in a timely?
I haven't heard so much about, about the afternoon.
Being a problem.
Right.
Except the kids who are on the bus, th- those kids who are.
Picked up first?
Picked up first and dropped off last.
And then the cur- right.
Yeah, that's why I'm, I'm thinking that the superintendent hope, will have something like within that month timeframe that hopefully we'll see an improvement.
Right.
Right. Cause I know we've always talked about the optimal time for a child to be on a bus should be like forty minutes.
Right.
Even sometimes people say forty-five. I think forty is a great number. I think beyond that is, it's long.
Right.
For a child to be on a bus.
Right. And then, um, the other, and I wouldn't even call it a wrinkle, just something that happens at the beginning of the year. Um, getting the sixth grade children into their student portal and then parents into the parent portal. So, um, I get emails, but again, um, Principal Lucia manages that and, and often what happens is parents have gotten the login information, but it might go to their junk mail and then they have to be reminded, you have to go into that because it actually doesn't come from, it's not from Peter Lucia. It's from Admin Admin, so they just have to, and again, for me, it's a reminder, next year, I will put that information into my This Week Sooner to be looking for that and if you don't get it by a certain date, go into junk mail and then if you really don't get it, then contact us. But you take care of every time I email, you know, with a parent, he's like, five minutes later, they, they're in, so.
No, that's good. So you take care of the sixth graders too, so they hold.
Well, and then, uh, Mary Ann Fravel works with the students to get their login information. And again, she does it class by class, so sometimes if a class hasn't gotten to it yet, I might get an email and my child hasn't gotten their login, but it's just because they haven't gone to the class to see Mary Ann Fravel yet. So, and then.
Will Mary Ann still be doing that where she?
She did, yep, she did it this year, yeah.
So the person who sort of replaced her is not?
Is, did not, yeah, yeah. Ms. Fravel is wearing many hats this year. And then, um, finally, we have started implementing the PBIS. And I know that it's just unfortunate that our PIN nights are so much later this year that I haven't been able to meet with parents to roll that out with them and let them know what it looks like. So they're really hearing about things either from their child in a, in a negative or a positive, and I hope mostly it's a positive way about things that are happening, but.
PBS stands for?
Positive Behavioral Intervention System. And it really is a, a way to help children socially and emotionally within the school. And again, it's a, it's really modeled after the RTI of academics, that we're looking at a tiered system of helping students behaviorally. And so that really is the goal of it. That's the one piece that's kind of the behind the scenes. Then the other piece that is more visible is how we acknowledge students for displaying all the attributes that we do find important either, you know, in the school and a part of our CARES acronym. So, and that is what parents will see and hear. It's that, that positive piece.
Good. So your, um, PIN nights are when?
Um, Tuesday, the twenty sixth for K to three and then the twenty seventh for four, five and six.
And it's six thirty to eight?
Right, and, um, again, I'll put it on my website, but, right, I'm gonna give the wrong information. So, the, the, the Tuesday night, I think it will be kindergarten and first.
That's the twenty sixth.
That go from six thirty to seven.
Oh.
And then from seven to seven thirty, everybody comes to the cafeteria for our big talk. And then from, um, seven thirty to eight, second and third grade parents. And then.
Mark down here too?
Did you, or I, I'm gonna have to double check because I just, from year to year, I alternate whoever was first go second. I know sixth grade will be first at six thirty on that Wednesday night from six thirty to seven, then cafeteria. And then, um, from seven thirty to eight, it will be grades, um, four and five.
So like in your This Week?
Yes, yes, yep, absolutely.
I would say as a, as a new parent in the district, um, I think there's a lot, and this is, this is in the spirit of, there's always room for improvement. I'm not trying to be critical. I think there's a, an assumption that new parents know a lot more than they do. Um, we are figuring it out as we go along and there's not, I know I can always reach out and ask a question, but a lot of times like.
You don't even know the question yet.
I don't even know, like, I don't know necessarily what, what PIN night is. And it's still two weeks away and, you know, there's plenty of time, but even something like the, the kindergarten parking lot, other than the fact that we've talked about it at these meetings, I don't know that there is one, I don't know, I didn't realize I should park in one place, not the other, that sort of a thing. So, I think for the newbies out there, it would be helpful, kind of a, a one-on-one.
Right.
Guide somewhere.
Well, and, and my hope, my hope, like a couple of things. My hope is that the, you know, in teacher newsletters, that information goes out. And also in my This Week, and I'll, I'll have to double check because I know the past couple of weeks I have run some information on dismissal to kind of make sure that some of that information gets conveyed. But, um, but again, may, you know, specifically for each grade, this is useful information for kindergarten parents new. So absolutely, I appreciate that. It's always a real drag.
Yeah, cause I mean, there also, I know, I also don't wanna fill your inbox with, with seemingly silly questions.
That are really not silly.
That are silly, but, but also I don't even know what my question is. It's just, what do we do now?
Right, right.
So.
Right, and, well, and again, you know, it's, the, the wonderful thing, but I also do find one of the hard things about so much internet and technology is that, for instance, that, some of that information is in the handbook. But because it's not a paper handbook and parents have to be led to that and we will be sending out, and if you haven't already gotten it, a, a signature so that have you read the handbook and gone over it with your child. But, again, you wouldn't, you wouldn't know that because it's two layers deep, you know, within the website, that kind of thing. In the old days, you would've gotten a paper handbook and then there would be. So, that's, it's wonderful not to waste the paper, but on the other hand, sometimes that information is very difficult to find.
Or potentially at PIN night, teacher might say, or might remind us to read the handbook and you have to sign the, you know.
Right, but then you have to go in and get it.
And it's, you're already a month, or not. I know it's like this, you're already a month in and, yeah.
Right, right. But that is ver- that's good, good to know, thank you.
Good, sounds like everything's great.
It is, yep.
But it's just the buses and that's not a surprise. I'm just, I really hope that, that we, we see an improvement. I, I love one school year to open and no bus issues, but we know that there's a lot, yeah.
I'm sure Mr. Ballenger.
Oh, definitely, definitely, cause it's changes every year.
Right.
Yes, well, it's funny, I actually have a friend who lives in Concord and she sent me, um, this email that the superintendent sent out about the bus problems. And she's like, don't you get a kick out of this?
Oh, yeah.
But Margaret, do you wanna also mention tomorrow, is it like a spirit day, the kids bring in a dollar?
Thank you, yes. Tomorrow is, um, our first Fund Day fundraiser. So again, every month, we do support an organization and we call it our Fund Day fundraiser. And I meet with the sixth grade students, you know, try for about a week before. And those ten students come up with the ideas of what will be the fun and then they all vote and decide. So tomorrow, we are supporting the Alzheimer Foundation and students have decided that it's going to be Dress Up Day. So, you can dress up as anything, a character, vocation, sports, or wear purple, because purple is the color for all, the Alzheimer. So either, or dress up in purple.
And who picks the fundraiser that you support?
And the, oh, well, we've, we've kind of come to some of it, um, through the years, some are, are near and dear to, um, our community. For instance, Alzheimer's, we know several people that walk in that, that annual walk every year and so we support that. You know, teachers mark, walk in that. Um, in that October, we always support the McDonough, um.
Melanoma.
Melanoma, so that's kind of a tradition.
I know JDRF was always big, the diabetes.
Well, then we support that in, in June, students do the walk. So there are some near and dear things and then, um, sometimes we'll add something new in a month when it's pertinent to either family or, you know, something that's going on in the world, so.
Nice, thank you.
Everything's fine at the middle high school. We, um, we have our new cafeteria, the new look cafeteria. Going well.
I've heard great things about it.
In our cafe, yep.
How's the cafe working? Is that?
It's so slow.
It'll catch on. What do you, do you think, Chloe, it'll catch on with the students?
Oh, yeah. I, I haven't got a chance to actually try it because I either have meetings or I come in late. But not so like, but a little later, so I won't have time to like.
That is the thing.
Sure, yeah, right.
But it's definitely great. I really wanna try the coffee or the bagels and.
Did you love the way it looked, like when you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, it's cool setup and one time at lunch, I just sat on the high tables and it was cool.
Good.
So that's going, the, the, um, the deli is, is the biggest hit, I think. Would you say that?
The paninis.
Yeah.
Yep.
And, um, this.
She's in eleventh grade, her first time she ever bought lunch.
Really?
Made a panini, cause mom and I are like.
The deli is, is really.
Yeah.
A bunch of people for the first time try that, so like this is great.
That's great, that's what we need.
I talked to Sean this morning and he said they're doing like sixty-two sandwiches a day, so that's, that's pretty good.
It was good.
Those are like made to order.
Yep, yep. It doesn't have to be a panini either, it can be, you know, anything that, that they offer. And, um, the, it was a little slow starting, um, the line moved slow and, and they're getting much better at that, so it goes pretty quickly. And because of the four stations, I think the kids, the entire lines have, uh, dissipated by within ten minutes. So, um, there's no long lines for, uh, waiting for your food anymore. Um, it goes by pretty quick.
That's good. And I do think that was one of the reasons, like, one of the top reasons why some kids didn't eat. Didn't, didn't buy there because they didn't wanna, you know, you wanna have fun with your friends and, right? I mean, you wanna take that time to, you know.
Sit, enjoy your lunch.
Relax, so that's, that's really good news. That's great.
Yep, so that's going well. And our maker space is, is going very well too. We have all kinds of things up there and, and the teachers are starting to bring their classes there and, you know, there's a group of kids that are, um, really catching on to it. And we're still trying to work out the staffing of it. Carol's working with that and, um, see how we can fund that. So, uh, that's, that's going very well. Um, our iPad initiative is, is just like, you know, we've always had it right now, it really is. It's, there's so much that goes into, you know, launching it and when you finally do, it's just like, well, it's no big deal, we've always had it. Um, I'm a little surprised that no one uses the charging stations in the cafeteria, so they must come to school all prepared and all fully charged and.
Those are great, those charging stations, but I can say that my child at night does put his on charge. But the interesting thing is, um, so my daughter, like, is in eleventh grade, so she didn't have the iPad initiative. And she was like, ah, you know, no, I'm not gonna bring my own thing. Well, by Friday, she was like, I want an iPad, I want this and I'll run through my computer and, and. So I think it's spreading, the excitement is spreading.
Yeah.
Which is good.
So, so that's pretty, that's pretty good. Um, I think in hindsight, we probably should've had more available extras, bought more extras because there are people that, uh, are new to the school and, and choice. Bought more extras because there are people that are new to the school and, and choice people that wanted to jump in on it and. We are, we are, we did order some, some other ones, but, so there's a couple, you know, maybe a three week lag for those people, but. We are providing them with iPads.
So how many additional did we, how many do you think we?
Would we buy ten more?
Twenty more.
Twenty more?
Yeah, well, the good news on all of that, and I know that was a big concern of the committee, that. Everybody better pay so we can make that first lease payment, almost everybody paid either in one payment or, or two. So, I mean, yeah, we could probably pay that off early, I would, I would think the way it's, it's going, so.
And the excitement amongst the teachers?
Yep.
For that, is that?
Yep.
Going well and?
Yep, the, all the apps that someone wants to buy have to come through me for us, so it's daily, I see a group of them, so. It's really catching on and it will continue to do so. And we're very busy with getting ready for Niask and really have a concentrated effort to finish those reports. And get the evidence posted in their portal, so we complete the self-study and we're ready for the visit in March.
Yeah, that'll be here really before you know it.
And all our athletic teams are staffed with coaches now. And that was, we sweated, yeah, we sweated that one out right to the wire and beyond the wire, actually, in volleyball. But everybody's, you know, doing well and we got off to a good start and. I didn't know how, I didn't hear about how the girls soccer team did today because I'm very interested in that one since it was.
We lost today, two to nothing.
That's disappointing, 'cause as you know, we played Mister DeFranco coaches for Triton, so.
And he used to be our JV soccer coach, so there's a little bit of a.
Yeah, he was the varsity, he was.
At one time, varsity boys.
Boys, yeah.
He was JV girls a couple of years ago, but we did a great job, the first half was zero, zero. And then they just got a couple, but it was, it was really a good game, but JV won.
I should have called a meeting after school and detained him. But, other than that, you know, it's business as usual, I think the, our two new office staff. Secretaries are catching on and doing well and get a lot of positive feedback from both of them and.
That's good, yeah.
We're adjusting.
Come out, great, you know, looks, looks good, seems, that's good. I hope the rest of the year goes smoothly, right? And the buses at the middle high school, though?
No problem.
Yeah, and usually they're, they're not really.
Yeah, and the key for us, for buses, is getting them out after school, right, as quickly as possible and we usually. Get them out within five minutes of the bell, so. That always goes well and there's, parents are cooperating with not driving up the driveway to block the traffic, so that's, it's all good.
One question I do have for you in terms of student parking, so I know that the parking lot is for seniors. And we all know that we have limited parking spaces in our community. So, you know, a lot of kids park either at parking lot or they park around the library and things like that, so I understand that. Recently, the police were preventing the kids from parking in a certain area, but there are no, no parking signs there. So I'm just wondering.
Downtown?
It's, it was on, like, it's not in the designated.
It's just right around the library.
Library, it's not in their designated line spots, but it's more pleasant, like.
Around the.
It's like across from the funeral home.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm talking right.
Yeah, like if you know where the whiners are, I don't know.
I haven't heard of, yeah.
Have parked there, and then the other day when the kids came to school, it was, they had the orange cones out. And then the police were saying you can't park here anymore, and I remember a few years ago, the selectmen were getting. Quite the phone calls from community members.
But that was downtown.
Right, but if these spaces are no longer available, there's probably a space, I mean, it's not a ton.
For Conti's funeral home or no?
No.
The library they're meant for?
No.
No, they're just there.
But if, if these kids then go over to the parking lot, I'm just concerned that the selectmen's phones are gonna be ringing again. With community members saying that they don't have spaces if they wanted to like walk the town and go shopping. I just don't know where the kids would park.
I don't think the problem was with the parking drive, I think it was they were parking on. Down, in downtown in front of the stores and there were no spots for the merchants.
There's a, there's a post to park in the parking lot, that's where Jeff used to park.
But when you say they're supposed to, who?
And juniors.
But is, that's not directed by like, at the principal, the principal doesn't say, you know, I don't think they're separate, that's just been where kids have, but I don't think it's.
It's usually not an issue until the spring because a lot of the juniors don't have their license yet and then over the winter. And they get them and then it becomes more of an issue. And we kinda just manage it until graduation and then they all first come first serve.
So no one's come to you and from the police department saying that it was, it was a concern?
But I'm sure that's gonna come up when the ass comes because it was a concern last time with not enough parking, student parking. And that's about the only thing we really didn't address, it's actually less now.
And now with the turf, right.
Yeah, there's left, there's less, yeah.
I'm looking forward to a great year.
Me too.
I think it's gonna be a good year, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys have a good night, thanks for coming up.
Hey, thank you.
Is this the wave?
Sure.
Carol said I could do it tonight.
Oh, go ahead. Okay, we have had some subcommittee meetings go on, I know Cheryl and I had governance the other day. We have some policies that we're working on, we have a few that we, we took home. Surrounding like FM LA policies that we just took home to review and then we're gonna meet in a month and look at those in more detail.
Well, and we just, we talked about the public solicitations in the school's policy, we didn't really change it, but. We just looked at the language in terms of, you know, what it actually means. And I know Carol was gonna make sure that that was communicated to the staff.
Right, in terms of what it does actually mean, because people don't necessarily know to go to the big policy book and, and look it up. So, we didn't change much, but.
Affects people who are fundraising in the school, right, you don't know there was a misunderstanding.
Marathon, like if they're running the marathon or, you know, having their own little charity event or they wanna solicit the staff.
Sixth grade celebration. Soliciting.
I mean, we ca, we came, after looking at the policy, we realized that we have. Only so much like jurisdiction over. These fundraisers and we're more concerned about during the day when kids are in school. Or staff are in school, that it's being, that things are being.
Right.
That they're being solicited to, but it wouldn't be, like even the eighth, the, even, even the senior celebration. They come here graciously and explain to us what they're doing, but it, we don't necessarily have the authority to.
Approve.
Approve it unless it's, it's an overnight. Which is their end of the year thing, but the rest of the things, we don't.
But I, I was just wondering if there could be a policy or a place that would really clearly lay out. You know, the procedures for these various different groups and then every year, of course, it's a new group of parents. But, you know, so that they would know what the protocol is.
Well, that is what, that is what we would, but the policy, the verbiage of the policy wouldn't be changing, it's just the manner in which.
The regu, the R.
Superintendent. Raises, yeah.
Right.
Schools and, and what the principals are in charge of, what they're responsible for. Things like that, like I got an email today, a parent asking if the school committee had to approve like a Cub Scout. Event at Penbrook after school hours. So things like that, we would not need to approve.
Okay.
So I, I do agree that there are a lot of misconceptions out there as to what needs to come here and what doesn't, so.
Right, but it, it would somehow be nice if we had a way to someplace on the website, even if we don't change the policies. Because the policies kinda logically do all line up, but, you know, just some.
Yeah, a list.
Place to do that. Some, some common sense, clear, easy to understand set of guidelines. For, that don't change any policy, they're just describing the way things are right now, right, yeah, for, for people who were, who were trying to fundraise. Cause there are various different groups, of course, you know, PTA, GEF, the different student groups.
Well, those thing, those are the ones that were pretty much clear cut, we were looking more to like the people that were doing, like say, running, running in a marathon and looking to solicit.
Staff members.
Staff members. Right, right, you know.
And that, that's a different group, that's a different kind of fundraising, but, you know, I'm thinking of.
GEF would be strictly like the, the principals.
Oh, that's who they would go to.
Correct. Right, right, so that could be part of the, you know, the guidelines, but there are other groups that are just trying to raise, you know, the, the sports boosters. They wanted to have an event or something, I don't, I know they're not terribly active right now, but if they became active. You know, they wanna have some special fundraising events, what would the protocols be?
Yeah, we could do that.
I think we could put some type of a flow chart or like you would said, an easy to read.
Well, and I think, I think. Maybe I'm wrong, but I think that's sort of the spirit of what Carol wants to sort of streamline it. To communicate with the staff, to make sure they understand.
And parents, I mean, stuff, yeah, I mean.
So maybe, that's a.
Right, no, I think that, that'd be beneficial to have that somewhere on the, the website for people to, um. To go to. So it was a, a very productive meeting. Budget and finance?
We're meeting next week.
Yep, we have meetings set up, negotiations you haven't met yet? Nope, busy time will be coming.
Yes, well, very quickly, gonna be ramping up soon.
Uh, safety?
Have not met yet.
Uh, PR?
Not yet.
Okay. Not anymore. Um, and then the superintendent evaluation, are you, uh, so Cheryl and Suzanne, so.
Right, that hasn't.
Okay, I know she mentioned setting up dates, just so she's aware of what.
Right.
What goes on, we're looking for, so.
The only, the other thing is, there's a PTA general meeting on October fourth.
Oh.
I don't know the exact time, but we, um, the PTA just had a. Uh, training for room parents the other night, which was very helpful. And the PTA is working very hard.
For the auction, yeah.
Uh, November eighteenth is auction day.
Are you playing a role in the PTA?
Um, well, I'm a room parent and I've been working to solicit donations for the auction.
Great, and so how is that going? It'll be great, I think, in terms of change in the venue, I think it's exciting, you know.
Yep, DeBorrow's.
Many great events at the Black Swan and, and Ipswich Country Club, DeBorrow's, I don't ever recall us going there, so that'll be fun.
Well, and the tickets are already on sale too, so.
How much they are?
Uh, fifty dollars a piece.
Fifty each?
Fifty each, and I know there's.
Discount if you do two, like is it fifty each, seventy-five couple?
I don't know, 'cause we paid a hundred for two.
We paid a hundred for two, yeah, well, and if you were among the first hundred, I think you're entered in a, a raffle.
A raffle for something.
For like a thousand dollars.
So, uh, November eighteenth?
November eighteenth.
And that's okay, so I already have that, okay.
And, um.
Oh, um, are they still doing projects?
Yes, the, each individual class will have, be doing a project.
Great.
To auction off and there will be baskets as we've done in the past. Um, and we're still, uh, looking for donations if anyone out there is. So inclined to make a donation.
Okay.
Greatly appreciated.
That's good, it goes for a great cause. Yep, it's always a fun event.
Oh, definitely.
Good.
So how do people buy tickets if they wanna buy tickets?
Yes, so there's a link.
On their website?
It's, it must be on the PTA website or even the Facebook page.
Okay.
I've seen it, I've seen that, I just don't remember yet.
And you do PayPal, I bet you can, because you can do PayPal, okay, with your membership.
Yep.
So I bet you I could put that on the Georgetown School District Facebook page, yeah.
Good, okay.
Yeah.
Well, I wish them the best of luck. Yeah, I think they're coming, oh, we should be having them in October at some point.
Okay, yep.
Have them come in and, and tell us what they have planned for the year.
Yep.
Thank you. And CPAC had, um, a meeting last week?
Yes, uh, let's see, it was, yeah, it was a few, few days ago, maybe last week. And they had, so it was the first meeting of the year, it was a meet and greet and Jack Tiana was there and I was there and it was at. Jeff and Maria's Ice Cream in Groveland, which is a really fun location. And Tom Stewart and his, his team were there and they went over the, the schedule for the year. They've just, they've planned so many wonderful events, eighteen separate events.
Wow, great.
Um, and, so I, and all the meetings sound really exciting, educational and helpful and informative. I'm just, I'm thrilled with the energy that the CPAC has from carrying over from last year, definitely, you know, and into this year.
So let me ask you, PM, over the summer, um, he had said that, um, two of them were stepping down. From the board, remember that Jeff and Maria's, that, um, Shining Star Award ceremony?
Okay, so did they do that?
Do they have?
Did they let them go?
Oh, yeah, they, maybe they stayed on.
I was not at the Shining Star, I think I had a conflict that, at night, but everybody that I knew before was still there, so I think.
If they don't have their official positions, they're still out there, they're helping, supporting, um, stepping down. Yeah.
Who was doing it.
Yeah, yeah, now, and there, so everybody's, they're all excited about the trick or trunk event. That's, uh, going to be, yeah.
When is that?
Let me know, so that is last year.
That was very good last year.
October fourteenth.
Good.
And so now last year, there was about a hundred cars and they're hoping to get to ten.
Wow, two hundred?
Yes.
Tumbling?
Yeah, well, we've got that many, they've got that many spots.
So, and just remind me, um, so parents are to like buy a spot, I guess, is that right?
Yes, you're gonna need to buy your ticket ahead of time.
Right.
Print it out and bring it with you, you know, in.
To gain access, yeah.
Car to gain access, yes. So, from what I understand, and all the details will be coming out, you know, um, soon. But it's, it's between two and three, that's when all the decorated cars are gonna be entering the parking lot. And there's a hundred and twenty-three spaces for them. Then between three, after three o'clock, the other cars, they can park up in the teacher's parking lot and then the one down by the soccer fields. Um, will be able to come in and the children can trick or treat and, um, you know, there'll be, yeah. Costumes and a parade and all that and concession stands.
And I, and I know Domino's is doing the pizza for them.
Right, right, totally, right.
And one reason why they haven't, they haven't, um, you know, they, they put the tickets out for sale yet is they're still trying to get corporate sponsors. And they've gotten a lot of great, um, you know, businesses from Georgetown, but they would like a few more. Because all of the businesses logos are gonna go on the tickets, so, you know, you print it out, you'll see that. So have to get all their sponsors before they print out those tickets. And, you know, so on the Georgetown Mass CPAC Facebook page is a place where you can volunteer. You can either volunteer to help out yourself or you can bring something, you know, for the concession, like water or paper plates or whatever it is. Uh, but there's a sign up genius, so it's really cut, it's real clear about, you know, how everybody who, uh, wants to help can do that. Volunteers will be needed between one and six PM. So any businesses that are interested in, in being a sponsor, I know the Georgetown, it's the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. Uh, so that, it's a great, great event and they are really very helpful to, you know, all the parents and all the families in Georgetown. Uh, who have children with special needs and all folks who are, who. It, they, all their meetings are open, everybody's always welcome, so.
Do you know when the next meeting is?
Do I, I do. Yeah, so their next meeting is October second, uh, six forty-five to eight PM. At the Georgetown Public Library, it's a basic rights workshop. Um.
What was the time again?
Six forty.
Six forty-five to eight?
Eight P M.
Yes.
And again, on their um Facebook page and also on the Georgetown District uh Schools District Facebook page is the special education um the s- meeting schedule that has all the details, like who's speaking at this and, you know, all the other good stuff. And these are, like all the events they have out on Facebook too as like events.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, they invite me to them, so I'm invited, so they're all my events.
Oh, that's good.
So, yeah.
Good, yes.
Yeah, that'll that'll be a wonderful, exciting event. I was so excited last year. I mean, they got great participation and the kids that had a wonderful, wonderful time. Everybody had a wonderful time.
Hmm.
They are, they're very concerned about safety, they're working closely hand in hand with Officer Olshewski and um police and uh Fire Chief Fred Mitchell and, you know, the schools and everybody, all the safety people are working, you know, in units and together with the CPAC. Well, and this, this year, it's a Saturday. It is a Saturday. Last year, it was like a school night, if I recall.
Right, yeah, it was a, it was a late.
Right. Yeah, so I think, I think that will be.
Helpful in terms of safety.
Even 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 better. And last year was really great, but I think this is gonna make it better.
It was awesome.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Uh I think that is it for business this evening.
For the food donation.
Food service donation, I think we have.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Thirty-seven dollar.
I did see the rate, yes. Another food service donation, thirty-seven dollars from our local organization here in town. Uh very generous that they continue to do this, it's, you know, it's.
Every month.
Yeah, every month we have had a donation from them, which is amazing, so thank you um to that local organization for doing that. So I'll make a motion to accept the generous thirty-seven dollar donation from the local organization, which helps families in arrears uh in the Food Services Department. So moved?
Second.
Uh all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, is it? Okay, um do you have a, do you have anything, Suzanne?
I think there was one more thing for the um donation of the bagels for the opening day.
Oh.
Was that an acceptance or just a FYI?
Uh was it just an informational thing?
Oh, well, that was very generous. It was the new bagel store in town, Best Bagels.
Yes.
They generously donated um bagels to the staffs first day.
The Welcome Breakfast, yep.
The Welcome Breakfast, which is very nice of them. Um I know I've heard great things about them. I personally haven't had a bagel from there because I'm silly, so I can't.
No.
I would love to have a booth for you on.
They don't, they don't.
No.
But but my children purchase from there quite often and um that is very nice of them. It's always nice to have a close partnership with um local businesses. Uh the same with with Domino's, I'd love to hear that, because they have, actually, since they've been here, uh have done a lot, Pomodori, Village. I mean, it, all of them have really been outstanding, the spot, the fundraisers that they do, um.
Well, and the Best Bagels are the ones sold at the.
Cafeteria.
At the cafeteria, right?
Cafe, yeah.
Yep. It's a great way to promote the local businesses.
Yeah. Yeah, the kids love them.
Yeah, well, that's great. Thank you very much to uh that business. I wish them the best of luck as they um start their business here in Georgetown. Um and with that being said, I think we are done for the evening. We do need to have an executive session. Um so at this point, I will adjourn the open meeting. Um we will not return to camera. We are going into executive session, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, for the purpose of a sick, a sick bank request. Uh and we will do, so we'll.
Second.
Okay, uh roll call.
And roll. Aye.
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 Great, thank you, have a good night.